All right, I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Andy.
Okay, let's start with roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Bozek.
Here.
Councilmember Rebus. Councilmember Conover.
Yes, here.
Okay. Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Here.
Councilmember Larson. And Councilmember Witten.
I am here.
Five present.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're looking for the approval of budget minutes for September.
I'll make a motion on all those.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have tonight's first reading.
Notice issued by given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County, Indiana, will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, Indiana, for its experience period three on April 24, 2018, at 5:30 PM to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year 2018 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. General Fund Jail account, 3950 contractual, $6,691.80. Sheriff, 1110 salaries, $4,874.43. Adult probation, 1110 salaries, $36,355. Recorder's Perpetuation Fund, 1189, 3130. Training and Education, $300. Adult Probation Supplemental Fund, 2101, 1110 salaries, $12,868. Prosecute Deferral Fund, 2501, 1210. FICA, 2,274, 1230 per, 2,442. Sheriff User Fees, 2505, 1110 salaries, a reduction of $4,874.43. Drug Task Force Fund, 40m, 3220. Telephone, $1,000. Volca Domestic Violence Grant Fund, 8112. 1110 salaries, 21,805. And 1120 hourly, 7,920. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have the right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken, signed by Vicar Abadak, ordered out of Porter County, published April 13th, in the Chesterton Tribune.
Thank you, Ms. Fink. Okay, first up this evening, we have the commissioners. You guys like to join us.
Commissioner Biggs, looking good as always.
I have your son sit up here with me just in case.
He's not moving.
Thought it'd fly right along with Larson and Rebus gone.
So this evening, we have a transfer request for $3,641,500 from contractual services to building purchase. This is to purchase the old jail house.
The old jail, yes.
Yes, sir. All right, so what's the plans?
Well, the plan is to get ownership of the building, to actually own it, and then we will move forward with the renovation to the interior that we need to do.
And I think you guys are already working on the liquor license and the restaurant blow.
Yes, a lot of moving parts right now. And it's all, it all depends on what you do tonight, so.
Counsel, do you guys have any questions?
So our total purchase price is 3.6415. That's our total purchase price.
Yes, yes.
Now, there was some negotiations back and forth. There was a question about the appraised value of the building, and so how did that all end up? Because I wasn't brought into the loop on that, which is probably why I'm not going to vote for it tonight.
Well, it ended up, we ended up meeting in the middle, you know, meeting to the appraisal value of it. They had done some additional interior work, and during the initial appraisal, they did not include a radio tower that they receive income on from rental, you know.
Okay, and so our grand plan, if I, memory serves on the bits and pieces that I've seen on this, so we're going to move into this building, 911 is going to go into that building, then?
Yes.
Is part of the prosecutor's office going into that building as well?
I think we still need, we're still negotiating, talking to the prosecutor's office and adult probation department.
Are there a question on that?
No, there's not a question on it. It's just that I think that you need to have those department heads involved in that discussion. It's not a decision the commissioners can make on their own.
I just thought it was the way we were going to really save money.
Oh, we're going to, we're going to save money.
Child Support Division, because we're paying rent for them to be, so they can, that's part of the plan.
Yes, yes.
Jim, is there a, isn't there a study of some sort going on, talking about workspace and what's needed throughout the county?
Yes, we're just kicking that off, looking at space needs study, workspace.
And just off the top of your head, what other offices might go into this building? It's a pretty good sized building, I'm just curious.
Well, you know, there was some discussion early on with voters registration, freeing up space in this building that would allow the more space for the Health Department downstairs. So, you know, we're still in the infancy stages of that. We have to keep in mind that we're purchasing not only to put some of these offices in here, but also to have space for, you know, for growth, you know, here in the near future, so.
Now, is there going to be a lot, more investment needed inside the building, I assume? Do you guys have any idea?
Yes, we have to have the interior walls put up, office, you know, office wall space.
Have you got any thoughts into how much that would cost?
Not, not right offhand. We do have it all within our bonding that we bonded, we have approval for last October. It's all there. We'll work within that budget.
Thank you.
And then, Jim, maybe remind everyone, I think the two appraisals, the two recent appraisals, they add them, divide it, that's basically how it's determined by statute what can actually be paid for the property.
We have to have it, we have, have to have two appraisals, and we have to take the medium of the two, which we have done, and they have accepted that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want, on an ad, that the radio tower on top is going to bring in, like, what, 28,000 a month, or?
You know, Sophie, I really don't know. I haven't been given those figures yet. I know it's, I know it was, it was, you know, you know, an amount that affected the appraisal of the building.
Right, my understanding that there was income that would be coming in.
Oh, yes.
Jim, could you?
There will be income.
Could you perhaps, for our next meeting, have the commissioners put together, you know, the total picture, what their projected income is going to be generated out of the building, what the projected, expected cost of the build out is going to be, and what the plan for what offices that they would like to see move in, and square footage, that kind of thing. I know we also have issues with storage and stuff, so if that's part of the plan, if they could just put that together for us for our next meeting, that would be great.
Right. You know, one of the reasons, and I failed to mention, is that, you know, we have, there's interior work that needs to be done to the old courthouse to maintain it, and we're so packed in there, we're using the basement with stores, and we can't even get into it to inspect it. That, that material would be brought over to the old jail, freeing up that space so we can actually get in and start repairing what needs to be repaired. But, yes, Dan, we'll, we'll provide you, you know, with, with some projections. We don't, we wouldn't have all of that right now because we, you know, we're looking for a tenant to take, take in the restaurant area.
Just whatever you have, because it just seems like, I have a couple unanswered questions. I know that when we talked about the bond and went through the whole discussion and decided to vote the bond, this was part of the possible bond expenditure, so I get all that. I just was hoping to get a little more information in anticipation of this vote, but if you could get the commissioners to pull that together.
Sure, we'll, we'll put something together and get it to the board.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Six to zero.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda this evening, we have adult probation, and we've got Judge Mary Harper joining us. Looks like we're looking for a few position changes, I guess.
I'd like to make a motion on the additional from adult probation general fund and the 144, as well as the additional probation user fees fund and the 144.
Second.
First and second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Judge.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening. Next, to the public defender.
I'll make a motion on this $9,000 transfer of legal services line depleted.
Second.
We've got a first and a second. Any further questions or discussion?
Hello, Ken, how are you?
Well, how are you? Doing all right, man. Thank you for asking.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, same sign. Yeah, motion passes. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Really brought it together for us, Ken. Thanks for that. Hit it on the park, baby.
We've got the recorder's office, looking to transfer $300 to training and education.
Some moves.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Six to zero.
How's that fund doing? Are we still, still pretty strong in it, John?
It's doing pretty well now. I don't know, please don't, you know.
Don't you read it?
No. No, it's doing pretty well. In fact, it's, it's perfect timing. We'll be able to use it for some projects. I want to digitize a lot more records. Still have some time when we can get that rolling this year. And computers, we're going to need some new computers this year, so it's doing, it's doing well. I thank you for what you did for us a few years back, I think it was two years ago.
Yep.
And it really has helped immensely, so thank you.
Sounds good, John. Thanks, man. Have a good evening. Keep up the good work. And next up this evening, we've got Parks and Rec. How you doing, sir?
Let me see, Walt.
How things going?
Motion yet? We wanted to hear your voice.
Very good.
All right, so first up, we have a transfer for $18,928 from salaries to hourly. We've got a transfer reason for 272 from salaries to dues and subscriptions.
Should I just read through all of them? Go ahead, yeah.
Transfer, next transfer, 7860 for medical life insurance to hourly costs associated with new part-time staff. $830 from medical life insurance to FICA, costs associated with the part-time staff. $2,150.40 from perf to hourly, costs again with the new part-time staff, to new part-time staff. And then we've got a Form 144, $31,200 to $0 for the office coordinator, up to $15 for public relations coordinator, up to $15 for events and rental coordinator. And lastly, we have a Form 144.
So, Walter, it sounds like you're doing, you're doing away with one position, creating a couple of other positions. Is that what's happening here?
Correct. The Park Board's Budget and Personnel Committee spent quite a bit of time going over this, particularly with the new HR director, so I want to make sure that I acknowledge the fact that she was really helpful on this, for the Park Board to decide what to do. This position in particular has just had excessive turnover, primarily because of salaries. We just can't compete with the private market for what we've been paying this person, and the result that the committee came up with, including with the conversation with Ms. Sheer, was, let's try this with two part-time positions, instead break the role up, take some of the functions and move them to the office coordinator, and see if this, this improves the efficiency of our retention rate.
Makes sense. Let's see how it goes. I'll make a motion to approve all of those transfers in 144s.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Is there any further discussion?
So, you're removing a thousand from the communications director to reduce the wage for the office coordinator? Those duties are going to be lessened?
No, so the office coordinator is currently at 31.5?
31.2.
31.2, thank you. So there's additional responsibilities that have been placed within her, that job description, causing that, that bump, but the communications director, we're zeroing out.
What specifically was the duties of the communication director when you had one? Or did you ever fill that role?
No, that's the role that I've had six employees in the last eight years burn through. That includes everything to do with our rental, our facility rentals, our own events, coordination with customer events, all of our sales and marketing, all of our PR, anything that's an outward expression of what we do.
So the part timers are going to assist in that duty, is what you're saying?
Correct, breaking that up into two distinct roles.
I'm pretty sure you and I have talked about that before, but I just wanted to make sure everybody knew why you were doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thanks, Paul.
Of course.
Is there any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying.
Two are roll calls, the 144s.
Oh, okay, that's it, okay. Roll call, please, Vicki.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Keep us posted, man. If some pushback on this, if stuff's not working, I know you're trying a different structure here, just keep us in the loop.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I appreciate it. Again, Heather and Tony too, I would have never come up with the numbers the way they were supposed to be without the help of Ms. Downing, so thank you. I appreciate it.
And I'm very excited about all the programs you guys got going on this year. Very good year. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got the clerk. Looks like we're taking $15,000 from salaries to 39,500 contractual services. It's a contract with the caring place to provide services for individuals requesting protective orders.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We got a first and a second. Are there any questions or further discussion?
How's it going, Karen?
It's going well, very well.
Good seeing you.
So what are you guys going to be doing with caring place? Just a last.
What happens is this, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but there, we're limited, the clerk's office is limited as to what we can do, and we're allowed to explain and answer questions about how the court works, and we're allowed to provide names of services where you can get legal advice, but we cannot provide legal advice or interpretation, and we cannot tell someone whether or not they should bring their case to the court. So the problem is with protective orders, we need someone that offers other services besides assisting them in the protective order, and sometimes it can take two hours to fill out a protective order, but we, as the clerk's office, cannot assist them in that. But the caring place does offer that option as an advocate, and can have the full report done, and then assist them in going to the court.
Wonderful.
And that's an incredibly important piece of the puzzle.
Right.
That's nice.
Is there any other further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Yeah, motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Martin.
The election board.
So, I was going to, Karen, on the election board, real quick, this is just a correcting a line item, right?
Well, we had that, that $138,000 maintenance agreement that was approved. The situation, though, is we only have $70,000 in that line item, and I wanted to make sure that it was coming out of the correct line item. As I stated, it's $23,000 less than our previous years in maintenance. We just need to transfer it to the correct line item.
I'll make a motion to approve this transfer.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Election's going well, I understand?
Yes, they are.
Could turn out at the early voting centers?
We have about 600 right now. Actually, the other day, Hebron beat Portage, if that tells you anything.
Wow. I'm glad I'm not on the ballot.
I've seen something on Facebook, are we still short poll workers?
Of course, of course.
So we're still working for poll workers.
We have to have a total of 615 poll workers to run the election, and right now, we're down about 175 poll workers. That would be both parties.
So, any of the newspapers here that want to run that, please?
So, and I did touch base on that today, understanding that we were still down, and I'm told that we should be okay. We're always sort of chasing poll workers, and this isn't extraordinarily worse than any other year.
It's not unusual than any other past year.
Yeah.
Because we were, in all actuality, we've got the training to do still, and we actually do is training the day they pick up their equipment.
Is training going okay?
Yes.
No disruptions, no interruptions in the training sessions?
We've had a couple situations.
But you've gotten through them okay?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you very much. If there's any issue with that, if you're having any interruptions, any diversions that are unnecessary in those training sessions, would you let us know?
Sure.
Because I'd like to do whatever I can do to make sure that doesn't happen anymore.
Will do.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Have a good evening. Okay, next up, we've got prosecutor. Looks like we're moving, excuse me, additional, $2,274 to FICA for a grant employee not using paid insurance, so 10% is allowed to be divided up among four grant employees. $2,442 to perf, $21,805 to salaries, and $7,920 to hourly, and also a 144 upping the salaries.
So are we basically getting some raises out of grant money? Is that what we're doing here, guys?
That's correct. And these, all the times I've been for you guys, when we've talked salaries of general fund funded employees, combination general fund, discretionary fund, and then grant, the grant employees tend to fall behind. They didn't get 4%, obviously, because they're not paid out of the general fund. And I checked, and these grant people have not gotten raised since 2013, so a couple bucks there. The bottom line is, we can't spend all of this grant because one of the grant people doesn't take the county benefits, so that's money that's sitting there, and if we don't try to spend some of that, we may not get it in the next grant cycle. So it's just one of those, with grants, sometimes you've got to spend it or you lose it, and we're.
Stipulations on where it can be spent? Can you explain those, please?
Well, it can be spent for, you know, we've utilized it for upping the travel allowance. We've encouraged the VicMAF to get more training, off-site training. It can be used for salaries, but not bonus, and it can be used, and we're also planning on bringing in someone part-time to burn some of that money between now and when the next grant cycle begins. A part-time job with no.
My concern with this is that you're, you're saying this because some of the grant people do not take medical.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one person. I think that our medical budget should be protected very carefully because we don't know by the end of the year what it's, you know, going to be. There are seven of us here on the council. I can attest that all citizens do not use the hospital or the medical insurance that the county offers. Does that mean that we should chop up our, what we don't use to give ourselves pay raises? I wouldn't do that, and I'm going to vote no on this part, too.
Do you understand this is grant money?
It is grant money, and I just don't, but you're taking it out of the medical.
Did you have, is this a new grant?
No, no, this is the ongoing. This is the ongoing grant. We get X dollars, and we're not spending $17,000.
Why didn't you ask for this at budget time? Why didn't you bring this up during the budgets?
Right.
That's my first question. Is this a brand new?
We're in this department.
Any of it. You're talking about giving raises, Brian, and here's the problem I've got. You have, your particular office has been notorious for not coming in with a specific raise request for an office-wide, you know, proposal. Then you come in later and you piecemeal it. And see, that's very disruptive to us because we need to be, and I understand this particular request is grants, but we need to be able to identify these things at budget time because that's the time we look at a projected income and not projected costs. So my question to you, generally speaking, is, why didn't, and I understand this is grant money, but why didn't you address these raises at budget time? You said these people haven't gotten an increase since 2013, but yet, this is the first we're hearing of this, why didn't you bring this up last October?
Well, that's a good question. I was not aware until recently that we were losing, potentially losing some of that grant money, and so when we discovered, oh, crud, we're going to have $17,000 a year times two years, because it's a two-year grant, that we need to do what we can to figure out another way to spend some of that $34,000. So, I guess, that's the simplest answer to the question. It wasn't on the radar back during last budget cycle.
Okay, thank you. And one of the questions I had asked you, and I just want to state publicly, is what happens if this grant doesn't happen? I understand that it's happened for 10 years, this grant will probably be there, but if it didn't happen, we are now on the hook for this additional salary. You said.
I can absorb it.
You've got other places in your budget that, if that happened?
Yep, and it's not a ton of money, so, you know, we're not talking tens of thousands of dollars in salary increases.
Sir, any motion or any further questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve both additionals.
Okay, we've got a first, we have a first and a second. Any additional questions?
So you said, you're just talking about the deferral fund, you're not addressing the salaries down the bottom, Mike? Are you addressing everything that he's asking?
No, the deferral funds.
So you want to do it in pieces?
The first two listed.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please. Vicki, something wrong? We were concerned.
Just to clarify, you're only voting on the additionals for the deferral fund?
That's correct, yeah. That was the motion, yes.
Even though those two are interrelated, but that is the motion, so, let's see, Councilmember Witten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
No.
No. Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the, the two additionals on the Form 144. Do we have a motion there? So moves.
Second.
Got a first and second. Are there any additional questions? This'll, this'll capture that whole, two additionals in Form 144.
When does this, does this grant come up in January or when?
No.
September.
I told the first to September 30th, and it's a two-year grant. Just begin the new two years coming this fall.
Do you have any other things that might come up like this in the next six months that you guys should be looking at now, money that you're not aware of?
As far as in grants?
Yes.
You're not aware of any?
Yes, okay, thank you.
So here's what we should do. When we come in for budget time, let's attack it a little differently. Let's look at all of your staff, look at all of their salaries, look at all of the increases, look at all of the changes, look at all the funding sources, and Brian, come to us with a complete package that we can have a meaningful discussion about for the benefit of your employees, you, and our ability to budget. That might be better.
And that's, and I, and I don't disagree with that at all. One of the dilemmas is because these grants don't run on the same county budget cycle, you know, we've asked, I, I can tell you that we're going to ask for a small increase for these people in the next grant cycle, but that will be, you know, after, we don't know about that.
Yeah, but if you, if you think you're going to do that, maybe when we're talking about salaries and we're looking at the salaries of everybody that works under your office and we have an understanding of what your projected increase is, you might be asking when the grant cycle runs again, you could let us know that so that we're not sitting here in two thousand and twenty-two being told these people haven't been given a raise since two thousand and eighteen, so, just a thought.
I understand.
Yep. Any further questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
No.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Whitten?
Yes. The motion carries. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.
Thanks, man.
So next up, we have the sheriff.
It's, I'm the only one that doesn't have a life.
So a quick question before we delve into this. So exactly what we're doing is we're, is this, the first part is a promotion? Is that what we're dealing with? A first-class patrolman that's been moved to captain?
This was last year when we started the Drug Task Force.
Yes.
We had a captain, and I was, it was supposed to be in this year's budget, and between the two sets of budgets, I think something just got missed. So this is me just trying to correct.
Clear it all up. All right, so I would like to make a motion to approve the additional, the one forty-four out of general fund, the reduction, the one forty-four out of the sheriff's user fund, and the additional thousand in the Drug Task Force.
Okay.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
Was that me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was being distracted by our president. I wanted to know who on the twitters.
What a Verizon jet pack was.
I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, and Councilmember Bozek?
Yes. Okay, well, this, motion carries. Next up, we've got the jail. Looks like we're moving, excuse me, additional six thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars to contractual service and thirty thousand dollars from salaries to overtime.
I'll make a motion on both of those, but I do have a question about the overtime. So my motion is to approve both.
Second.
Okay. How are we doing on the overtime? I mean, you already.
Well, I'm out.
Yeah, why not? It's April, so.
I know. It's, uh, two new, we've lost, we lost eight at one point, and then we had four in training, you know, but they can't, they're not a body unless they're on the floor. I mean, they can't be a body for, they do two weeks of training in, in the room, office, and then they go out and they have to be with another jailer.
Our salary's still an issue? Is that why you're losing people?
Um, we lose them for all kinds of reasons.
They all want to become merit officers.
And a lot of it is that.
Have you ever visited, like, rotational through other departments, having their officers come and work on their off?
From other departments?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I.
Because, you know, those guys are always looking for second, second, uh, second.
That's an interesting thought.
Is it part-time?
And I was just thinking they could handle a part-time position, the carryover would be, I know there's always officers, I used to have guys work for me that were officers, always looking for part-time work.
That'd be something I, not a bad idea.
Did you like police?
No, no, not.
They ain't coming.
Yeah. I could bring it back to them.
I just, I know what the shortage is, and maybe having a rotational fill-in would be something we could, you know, employ to kind of limit some of our overtime hours.
Yeah, depending on the training, type of training.
So when the time, from the time that a jailer is hired to the time that they're considered a body on the floor, hopefully they're never a body on the floor, what's, what's the time period?
Well, as I said, I think it's two weeks. I, I didn't, I would have gotten better prepared. I think they're on the floor probably two months before they're let go.
And so as we sit here today, what's our vacancy right now? Or what's our, our vacancy?
I, we just filled the last two positions.
So we're full strength, but they're not all trained?
Right.
How many are in training now?
Two.
Just the two.
Right, and they'll, they'll be, the train, just now, they started two weeks ago.
So if we have full staff and fully trained, is there no overtime then, or do you guys still incur overtime?
Uh, depending on what's going on. We have fed runs, you know, we have, you know, if somebody calls off, if somebody's sick, if, you know, we've got people on military, we've got one guy that's out quite a bit this year, we've got one guy who has some medical issues who is out.
So armed with all that stuff, what's your projected thirty, how long will this thirty thousand get us? This is general fund money, so I really need to know. What are you, what are you thinking? Is this going to get us to the end of the year or?
Probably not. It just depends. It's like a bouncing, it's all over the place, depending on how many people fall off.
What did we spend last year, Vicki, to know? And was last year a high year for overtime, average?
It's call-offs.
Yeah, I think, yeah. It's call-offs, a big deal that's going on this year. Well, they use every bit of time they can. Of course, they're sick, not they're sick, but their vacations and all that, so we have to cover all that also.
Can dig it. So Vicki, those questions that were asked of you, how did you last year?
So last year, a total expenditure in jail, general fund overtime, a hundred and sixteen thousand three forty-one.
And how are we so far for this year? With, if we approved this thirty thousand, what would that put us to?
I'm in the red right now.
Edie, was that a big number last year or normal?
Um, you know, I'd have to look at, at L as a whole, but I think that was a larger
number last year.
Remember, we transferred like seventy-five thousand to us this year.
Right, yeah. And most of this is coming from unused salaries.
That's frightening, though, too. You said you're in the red. How much in the red are we?
Couple thousand, three thousand.
Yeah, right now, twenty-nine fifty-five.
Yeah. So right now, if we approved the thirty thousand, that's sixty thousand. Last year, we did a hundred and something thousand for the year. Okay, so.
Well, I can tell you right now, we got one jailer who's talking about, or actually two of them, becoming a police officer.
Commissioner Biggs?
Yeah, I mean, this, this problem of being short-staffed is national, it's really a product of low pay and it driving the economy. They either leave because they, you know, they find a better job.
And it's a.
Some of those guys move on to be, and women move on to be merit officers, a lot of those guys do that.
They get offered to be on the road.
And move up.
And we've got two now that are talking about it, not with our agency but other agencies, Lake County and stuff. So we, I mean, we, we encourage them to let us know, not to just surprise us and tell us, so we give them the, you know, opportunity to come to us without.
Okay.
You know, because we can't.
Yeah, I got, that's tough.
We've got to know it ahead of time, and we can't have them leaving us, you know, you know, without some kind of.
Today's my last day, Dr. Biggs.
Yeah, exactly.
Today's your last day?
We get that, too.
What on the record, did I take that back?
But the one thing.
Thanks, Edie. He's a jolly good, all right, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
This is coming from unused salaries, so it's not like, you know, we're asking for the salaries plus. I mean, the reason why we have so much unused salaries is because they're gone.
Yeah, but at the end of the game, it never really ends up that way. I got to tell you.
No, it doesn't, yeah.
Time and a half's never good, no matter what.
Yeah, all right, that's my question, Chairman.
Any other council member, council?
I just wanted to make a mention, we, you only asked for thirty thousand for this year for two thousand and seventeen?
Well, I don't want to, like, overextend.
I know, but we know last year we spent a hundred and sixteen thousand, and we could have Vicki pull up a lot of screens. Maybe that's something you need to really look at since we're always going over.
Yeah, but when we were, yeah, but candidly, when we were looking at the increases in raises and we're having that discussion, it was mentioned that they didn't think their overtime would be as bad this year, in all, in all honesty. So that was an area that we thought we could.
And it always gets bad.
Yeah, always gets bad.
From what she said here and explained, it's always bad.
Right. Well, I'm not the one that said it, so.
Where are we in our salary schedule? Are we close to other jails outside? Are we way underpaying the personnel?
Um, I'd have to look at that. I know they did look at that, too, but I think the majority of it, it's not so much underpaid, it's the job.
Conditions.
Difficult.
And you have to understand that last year for this year, we gave the jailers, I think, the highest raise they've gotten in a long, long time.
We did, but a lot of those people were on their way out probably before they received a wage.
Well, like, again.
A lot of them are training to be road officers.
Right, that's right.
Well, they're not training, but they're negotiating.
They're wanting to.
But none for us right now, the, they're leaving for other agencies.
Are, are, are merit positions filled? Is that why, or?
No, you're in the hiring process.
So why aren't they moving?
Well, probably some of it has to do with we're real picky.
Oh, okay. It's not money.
Occasions.
Um, on the two leaving, you mean?
Mm-hmm. Just curious why they're not staying at the county.
Probably one for them, it's just, they're not staying probably with ours. I don't want to make it sound bad, but it might not be someone that they're willing to hire. We could, you know, we are picky.
All right.
Very strong in qualifications.
That's good. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Um, see, we've got an additional, uh, roll call, please, Vicki?
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Thank you, Edie. Have a great evening. Thanks, man.
That's wonderful, Sheriff.
Yeah, Sheriff signed off to us, that's great.
And congratulations, Nicky.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just sorry today.
Oh, okay.
She's due, or are you having her?
Her daughter is going in.
Congratulations.
Oh, no.
She's going to have a baby next week.
Congratulations.
This is, is, you have that reserved, so if you want, wait.
Oh, I'm glad you said that.
We're going to be at only seats only, we're not going to have any standing rooms.
Where's that going to be at?
Um, I believe it's at.
Ivy Tech.
Ivy Tech.
Do you want to kind of tell everyone in the audience what it is, real quick? Do you want me to?
Um, okay, the sheriff's department has put this together. They have two speakers. This one gentleman is, was a staff member at Columbine High School. The other is a true crime writer, enforcement trainer, and youth culture specialist. And it's eye-opening educational evening focused on informing parents, school staff, and law enforcement of the dangers of video games and bullying as they relate to school shootings. And it's Monday, April thirtieth, at Ivy Tech Community College. You can make a donation if you'd like, and it goes to School Safety Commission, and you don't have to be. They ask that children are present, and they just about have a full audience.
Does it tell you on there not to be an NFL football player or any of your problems? Is it all in problem, if it's left in there?
Yeah, he sent it to me, too. God, Edie. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up, we've got our health department. We're looking at forty-nine, six forty-one to zero dollars for PHN and zero to forty-eight, zero fifty-five for PHN.
I'll make a motion to approve the one forty-four.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Any questions or further discussion?
How are things going with the health department?
Good, we're very busy. This is, I want to explain, we actually had one nurse that had been with us for seventeen years, retired December first, and then we had another nurse that had been with us for twelve years, just retire March, March first. So we were looking, the fact that we had a part-time nurse that was doing such a great job, and she stepped into a full-time position January one, but we just hired another nurse to fill in for the one that retired March one. But, so that is how we're backing up, and we want to do, and Sylvie and I talked about it a little bit, but, you know, when you have a nurse that's been there for seventeen years and she's making this amount, you can't take one that is just starting out and plug them into that amount. It's just, it's not, not right for the one that's earned her, you know, paid her dues. So, you know, we'd like to just maybe get all of your approval to look at a tiered system, you know, for those nurses, you know, once they've been there, like we do vacation, and you need to get to this point, you get to this point, and you earn a little more and a little more. And I want to tell you, too, that the raise that we got, that you gave to all of us, really helped in recruiting, you know, new nurses. So we had one that came in that was already making fifty-eight thousand. Well, what, what we could pay is like ten thousand less than that, but, you know, um...
Did she come?
No.
Oh, I was going to say.
No, obviously she's not, but, um, but anyway, I believe we've got a, a really good one. But we've, you know, the nurses, really, the ones that have been there for a while, they've really been working hard because we've had one on medical leave and, and, you know, with those, those spaces, they've been doing double, triple duty, so we've been pretty busy, so, but, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any further questions or comments? The roll call, please, Vicki?
Yes. Um, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
Yes.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are to the second reading part of our meeting.
We, as it has been determined, it is now necessary to appropriate more money than what was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore, the either deemed result by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. General fund, a total of forty-seven thousand nine twenty-one and twenty-three cents. Recorder's perpetuation fund, three hundred dollars. Adult probation supplemental fund, twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Prosecutor's deferral fund, four thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. Sheriff's user fees, a reduction of forty-eight hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-three cents. Drug task force, a thousand dollars. Invoca domestic violence grant fund, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that concludes second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki. Okay, next, we've got our attorney's report. Mr. Harper?
I'm going to make a motion to approve second reading.
Thank you.
Here we got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitten?
All right, I'm all for it.
Councilmember Bozek?
Yes.
Councilmember Conover?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, Councilmember Justin?
Yes.
Six to zero.
Mr. Harper, for real now, we've got our attorney's report.
Today's an easy day, there's nothing to reinforce this.
So nothing new on hospital liabilities, no, I know we had some talk about threatened litigation, that's not gotten to the next phase?
It's not gotten anywhere at this stage, at least.
Have we been to a reply letter to the second reply yet?
We have not. If we're, if we're not talking about that, I would suggest we, yeah, maybe we have an executive session, but I just wanted to see if you've gotten any further. Good questions, Brian. I didn't want to get into deep. We have not, and.
I'm with you, dude. We're good.
Good answer.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Next, we have any matter that would probably come before the council. I'd like to bring up, we would like to move our meeting date next month, from the twenty-second, twenty-second, excuse me, to the twenty-ninth. We've got a member that'll be out of town, and I just wanted to see if that would all work, if we're going to have quorum.
Fine.
Any problems with that?
Same time?
Same time, yeah.
Five-thirty or for Larson, five-forty?
Whatever I do here.
So if there's no issues, Joy, if you can make that change. Was there any other?
I'd like to point that out, Mr. Witten. I have not, I have not missed the meeting yet.
You're doing a fine job, Mr. Larson. You're a real important key to the whole thing.
Bless you. Okay, is there any other, uh, matter that would probably come before the?
I, I have a group of, uh, representatives from Liberty Fire that are sitting here in the audience. They were quietly sitting.
Liberty Fire, you're saying?
They, they had some concerns, we've kind of addressed some of them, but we haven't mentioned them tonight. They were hoping to have some information on the 911 situation and the updates. And since we, we kinda shelved that for a little bit, I was hoping that we could at least address them tonight.
I know the commissioners did bring it up the other day at the meeting and Jim Biggs had, or Commissioner Biggs, excuse me, had said that they're looking at different options and they're working with, uh, the, the 911 to figure out what the best option would be, whether that be a single or dual, dual-band channels or two channels in the county. I don't think we've gotten anywhere. Mr. Brickner, can you quickly speak on where we're at or we're starting talks?
We're still discussing it.
Okay. And I know Mr. Biggs has talked to different chiefs, um, and has also talked to Chief Troy Williams, 'cause I spoke to him as well, I'm working through things.
Mike, just for their information, we're not at full staff in our operators yet, right? We aren't gonna be at full staff until, we have another group rotating in pretty quickly, is that probably?
You're right, we are not at full staff. And listening to Edie talk, talk about the challenges of, you know, staffing. But, uh, you know, we just are getting ready to do what we call critical pre-testing. We have 47 candidates, we're getting ready for testing now. We have six in training right now, so, yeah, staffing is.
And our current, our current numbers are what now and, and our current dispatch numbers?
We're, we're, we're understaffed by 13 of the budget for. You know, again, my first day walking in, we were toward 10.
Right.
So that's the challenge.
Well, as you kind of work through, and I know you've had some meetings, Mike, and I know you've talked with some council members and commissioners, obviously, and chiefs, and I, I, and I know that they're weighing all the options and when you get your, when you guys figure out which option you're gonna choose or what path you're gonna proceed to follow down, that's when I wanna hear the presentation.
Right. I think that's what we're, that's what we're all waiting for. I think the, the issue is, is we're addressing some errors that we found. I think there's some things that you guys had questions on. Um, there's, we're still in a transitional process. I mean, Mike's hit the ground running, but we're still gonna have, we're still gonna have things that need to be addressed. So I think in the entire process, um, we're moving pretty rapidly, but we're not jumping the gun on the whole situation. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we are moving fast, a lot of changes. Um, you know, uh, you, right now, we have, you know, police departments that are, they're, they're going to a silent dispatch system at their own.
Not in Porter County though, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. Oh, who's doing that?
Yeah, um, which is even a step beyond of what we initially introduced. And we have, we have 99% of the law enforcement on board with that, you know, at their request to do that. So that's, uh, uh, very innovative, uh, progressive. We're excited about that. Right now, right now, we're kind of in a phase of deciding on the best option, um, and to move forward. You know, uh, speaking with the commissioners and then the next thing will be on, uh, how we're gonna be training our dispatchers to be.
And I, and I had some questions that had kind, you know, had come up in my mind as I was getting calls from police and fire, members of the police and fire community, but I'm gonna hold those questions until I see what option you guys are going to choose and what path you're gonna choose and what structure you're gonna choose. And then I'm gonna ask those questions because it's a little early. Because when talking to the commissioners, they're like, look, we're still trying to figure out how, how we're gonna go about this, so.
Which is the reason they came up.
Right, right.
So, and there was quite a few calls to me personally asking if you guys were gonna be on the agenda and your work, because you guys are still working through it and that's what I had told them.
Well, I'll offer, if anybody on the council ever has any questions, please, please call me. You know, I'll be more than happy. We've had a couple councilmen, um, come to the center and spend some time and, and, but if you ever have any questions, please let me know and answer those, yeah.
Um, I just wanted to add, I think at the end of the day, I've talked to the commissioners, I've talked briefly with Mike, nothing is gonna be done that doesn't, officer safety, firefighter safety, public safety, immediate dispatch. This is, this is what we're all about and this is what we demand out of our tax dollar. And that's what they're working towards.
Right, and I.
It's not to put anybody in jeopardy.
And so the thing, so here's the thing. So we all are subjected to, or at least made privy to, the concerns that folks in whatever, whatever department or whatever law enforcement agency or fire department, some of the concerns that they've addressed. But some of those concerns are not quite ripe yet because some of them address a single, you know, uh, band and not having, you know, just one frequency and some of the concerns, you know, comparing it to the old plan A system for those of us that were in law enforcement a million years ago and, but we're not to the point to ask those questions 'cause we don't really know if that's what's, what's gonna be the, the option. So, uh, as the commissioners work through this with Mr. Brickner and as they come up with, with whatever option, whatever plan they wanna put in place, then, Mike, I will be contacting you. But quite frankly, I've talked to the commissioners and they said we're still deciding.
Right.
So it's kind of where we're at.
Go ahead, question. Then the date, who are told this is gonna take place July, this new system, the last meeting that we discussed. Now, if this happened in July, this is a short amount of time for most of us, all state departments here, it's going to occur.
Can you identify yourself and where you live, please?
Michael, why, why, Assistant Chief, every time.
Thank you.
So what we're interested in is how much is each department gonna have to put out for this? There's 18 fire departments in this county, 15 are volunteers. Now, every volunteer department has enough money to put out thousands every year to change the system. We recently just changed the system before the new representative of dispatch came in and it cost us a lot of money. Radios that are $6,000 each. Now, we're gonna have to go back to reprogram the radios with payers that would be up to date. That's a lot for a volunteer department to take in, for a city, it might be different.
I think, I think you've got a, you've got a valid concern, however, they're still going through all the planning. So I think it's really hard to answer that and this is not really the, the best place to answer that until they're done with the planning. Not to be offensive, it's a great question. I just don't think that, and Mr. Brickner, correct me if I'm wrong, I just think they're still, it's, it's a, it's in infancy.